So in the clause, we'll call the public hearing of the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. Roll call. Chisholm?
Present.
Max Baron. Binge?
Present.
Smith?
Present.
Van Dorn?
Present.
Are there any? Thank you. Are there any objections to our proposed fiscal year 2018-2019 budget?
I have a question. Okay. From the reestimated for 2018, the end, to the new budget, your revenue goes up by roughly thirty-five percent. So when we tracked it back, it was that twenty-four thousand dollars in that miscellaneous category. What's the identity of the revenue in that miscellaneous?
It's partly estimate on selling the house or any other unforeseen revenues we have coming in. It was originally in there as the prior year, the twenty-four thousand was there for the selling of the pickups. And at first, I wasn't sure where it came from. I figured that out.
Yeah.
And so I thought about taking it out, but I thought we'd leave it there for that sale of the house.
Okay.
And we may not have that much, but it's just an estimate at this point anyway.
What is the house listed at?
The house was originally, they intended to sell it for thirty-six thousand.
Okay.
That's something that we're going to be discussing here in the next month or two about how we're gonna do. Originally, we talked about auctioning it off, but actually had a couple of people express interest. After being in the house, I think a thirty-six thousand dollar was draining. So we're gonna maybe open that up for bids and talk, discuss that here coming up later and seeing what we can get out of it.
Yeah, because if you lose that twenty-four thousand, it really makes it.
Right.
Your general doesn't look quite that nice, all thirty-five dollars there.
Yep, it changes things a little bit.
Changes things quite a bit, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. I just didn't know the identity of the revenue for that twenty-four thousand dollars, so. Thanks, Ina. I figured you checked into it.
Any other objections or questions pertaining to the eighteen-nineteen budget? I would entertain a motion to close the budget hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the budget hearing. I'll second.
Motion by Chisholm, seconded by Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So that'd be sent to county? Take it to the county. Well, we have a little more. We have to formally pass a resolution here later. Okay.
But it goes to county after the?
Yep.
To county?
And it'll be done by March fifteenth, like it's supposed to be.
Outstanding.
Outstanding.
Ted will be ecstatic.
Okay. March twelfth, twenty eighteen, we'll call the regular city council meeting to order. Roll call. Chisholm?
Present.
He's still here. Max Baron?
Nope.
Binge?
Present.
Smith?
Present.
And Van Dorn?
Present.
Yeah. Alright. I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Chisholm?
I'll second.
Seconded by Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's a big zero for the opposed. Consent agenda, we have. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
The motion will approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Binge?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chisholm. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, mayor's report. February is a busy month for us at City Hall. We prepared our own budget for the first time in a very, very long time. Went line by line on three different occasions, I think, in here, making cuts where we needed and approving, be approving it later this evening. Big thank to Ina and the city council of working some extra nights, getting this prepared and finalized. Blakesburg Development Corporation sold the old gym in the last month to Tim Osteen and his wife. It'd be great for the people in the community to get to know Tim as he plans to continue to use the building for community functions. He has a DJ service, bounce houses, plans to do some other things to benefit the community. Should be a really good deal. Sold it to a good dude, big guy. As we discussed in the budget meetings, the Blakesburg summer ballparks have stepped up and volunteered to play for the electricity that they use at the ballpark this summer. Brad Fisher was elected president of that group at their last meeting. I think that that group will continue to have a great working relationship with the city going forward. Again, they're really willing to help out. They will be setting up their own cleanup day to get the ballpark ready. I know there was some improvements for the ICAP grant that they're gonna be working on that day. It'd be awesome if we get just anybody on board. I'll try to help provide details with that to people as they move forward. Usually, it's just a lot of the parents that have kids playing out there, get together, pick up trash, do any kind of improvements they need to get ready for the season to get started. As we'll be voting on here directly, the citywide garage sale and citywide cleanup day will be coming up in June. It's been a couple of years since we've done that, so I'm really excited to see that come back, help us beautify our city a little bit. Really important to bring that back or something. I felt pretty strongly about. I contacted Eric Klein on behalf of the city to see who Klein Family Farms contacted about the coal patch to patch the potholes in town last fall for the corn particle. And see, so we can let them know we're interested in maybe purchasing some of that. He hasn't come back to me yet. Just kinda waiting and seeing what, how much that costs so I can present it to you guys and we can decide on what, how we wanna progress with our street issues. We also, I contacted Joel Gabrielson at the state, I believe is his name, about changing the purpose for our local option sales tax money that we discussed at the last couple of meetings. He said there's two ways. We have to have this request turned in to the county by August twenty-ninth to get it on the ballot. There are two ways we can get it put on the ballot. Either we can petition the county board of supervisors with five percent of the signatures of people who voted in the last countywide election, which would be, we'd have to get like five, between five and seven hundred signatures, I think, which is a lot. But we have to, anybody from the county. Or?
County?
Yeah, if it opened to the county, they'd have to. Or we can ask the city of Atumal. All they have to do is pass a motion to allow us and any of the other communities, since they have the biggest population, they have over half the population of the county living in Atumal city limits. If their city council would pass a motion that would allow us to put that on the ballot in November. That's the route I'm kinda looking to take. I'm gonna try to meet with some of the other mayors around or communicate with them and find out if they have issues, the same issues we're dealing with, and would like to change their use for the local option money. That's kinda what we're looking to do. Locktronics was in on March sixth and changed our city, our locks. Want to let you guys know that that, we passed that, approved that last meeting, and it is done. And one last thing that wasn't, I've come in a little late. I talked to Cheryl from the library. She said the friends at the library are looking for new members, so anybody that's interested out there that would be interested in joining up and signing up for that group, they would, they are interested and in need of some people. So anybody, contact the Cheryl at the library. She would be, let you know what you need to do to get hooked up with the friends, so. And that's all I've got, so. Do we have any communication from the public?
I got a question. Back to the ball, Ina. What's our plans on getting rid of the old lights?
Uh, there's, it's a great question. Last time I talked to Brad about that. Anthony Christner from Christner's Contracting is supposed to be disposing of them probably during their cleanup day, I think. There's the, I'll get with him again and make sure that was, they're having a meeting tonight and I'll be in. They're gonna get some stuff sorted out. But last time I talked to him was Anthony was wanting to get rid of those poles, so he was wanting to use them for something and that'd be.
That'd be a good home.
That was a great question, because I've been asking that to myself. The plan is for those, so. But, yep.
Well, it's not, it doesn't bother me for him to be there, so I'm not in any hurry. I just wondered what we had in mind.
Yep, that's what they, Anthony had plans for him, so that was.
That's good.
Yep, that's great for Anthony. He can, he helped us out. He's been a big help. He's got kids to play out there. So they got a good thing going out there. A lot of people cooperating and helping and everything. Any other communication from the public? Alright, moving on. Alright, old business. We will pass a resolution here for looking for a motion, somebody to make a motion to pass resolution eighteen dot three dot twelve dot two to approve Councilman Jerry Van Dorn as the city's volunteer coordinator.
I'll make a motion on resolution eighteen dot three dot one two dot two to approve Jerry Van Dorn.
Motion by Smith?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Binge. Roll call vote. Chisholm?
Aye.
Binge?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Jerry?
Do I abstain or do I vote on this?
I'd say you could abstain since it's against you or, yeah, I don't know. If you're willing to take on the responsibility.
Yeah.
If I had him abstaining, we still have a three day. Three to one. Yep. His absence. Okay, at the last meeting, we discussed, and this will be kinda the first thing that after we get our, got our volunteer coordinator set, we get our volunteer forms filled out for the insurance purposes. We talked about building a fence around the property on one hundred North High Street that the city owns next to the parsonage where we keep our rock and our, I think there's some sand over there, there's some rock and sand or something. Where we put the coal patch last year, I just think for liability purposes that we, it'd be good to maybe get a date set and we can start working on that and get it fenced in.
There's definitely some pipes over there we need to pick up and get rid of.
Kerry said it was no good. We just need to get rid of it.
What are you thinking? Like that orange, you know, fencing?
I would like this, like a fence for the gate. I guess, I don't know, we haven't really.
They use snow fence at least and put a gate so you can get a tractor in and out of there. But get it fenced on, so we got a lot of stuff in there. If somebody falls, we're, we just need to get that.
I guess, well, I'm thinking that somewhere down the road, we ever able to put in like a chain link or something. You might wanna survey it or something.
That's true. So we wanna start with the snow fence now and then just.
Well, don't you think as long as we secure it, I mean, if somebody wants in, they're gonna get in. But truly made an attempt to. I just think that orange snow fence, keep mine and have it so you can open up.
Can we do any color of the orange? Long story, but can we do any color of the orange?
I think most of the orange. Steel posts, those would be pretty easy. Couple guys can.
I said, yeah, it wouldn't take, it wouldn't take a real long time probably to get something like that.
We just have to buy some, and all the orange fencing and. I'd actually get steel fence posts.
We got cleanup days coming June for a class project there.
Yep, that's something we're gonna be approving. So I guess we've got. Does anybody wanna pick a date to do that or are we just okay with moving forward that we're gonna do it at some point?
I would say we need to figure out how much material we need and I'll get a thing signed and get for the volunteer thing here tonight.
And that's what we get those passed out to people that are, anybody that's interested in.
Basically, you get those and sign them and they're good for a year then.
Just keep along if it works.
That's for insurance purposes.
I'll get some measurements on the fence and how many posts we need and, you know. Why don't we just, next month, we can set a date. It'll be, I don't know if it'll frost it out of ground or not yet. It probably is, but it'll take a while to get the fence and posts and stuff, so. Let me measure and get all that figured out and our next meeting is set for sure date. Unless I say we can get the stuff and go forward before that, we can. Do we need to call them in to do that or?
But if it's gonna be, I mean, I said, it's not, it's not a pressing issue, but it's something that we need to get there. So we can wait till the next meeting.
I'd say we probably need to approve spending the money, don't we, to buy the stuff?
So we get, get us an estimate, we'll approve the estimate, and then we'll approve the date at the next meeting. So I guess what we need to do with this there then is just, I'll take a motion to table, setting the date until the next meeting.
I'll make a motion that we table the date of building the fence. Last year, we just overlapped it and tied it. And like I say, if somebody really wants in there, but. I'll just get zip ties, I think. We'll put it up with zip ties, heavy ones, and then we can, then you can just hang it up over the fence post and work, so.
I'm kinda with you. At some point, I'd like to use chain link, maybe if it's gonna be a deal, but just for now, to get it fenced in and keeping it. You know, it's liability issues.
Other than our fire departments, you know, letting us keep our sand out there, we really don't have any. The lagoon road is basically so many feet. Was the fire department wanting us to move that stuff out of there though? Well, I think getting the pipe out, I think, you know, made them happy and I kinda, my theory on it is till we have a place to put it, there's not much use just moving it up here. If we can trim around it, keep it looking nice, I think maybe we could get along with them and talk to them.
I have a motion by Chisholm to table, setting the date to build a fence in the property on North High Street. I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, as we discussed at our last meeting, about fixing the blade on the truck. I think we're done with snow for the season. Would Darren? Jerry had volunteered to work on fixing that blade or helping get it repaired. I would entertain a motion to approve Jerry Van Dorn to fix the blade on the truck. I'll give you a motion to approve Jerry.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chisholm? Motion by Smith, seconded by Chisholm. All in favor?
Aye.
Jerry's gonna sit this one out again, so we got a three-year one to action.
And just so the community's aware that I think this city council is gonna be a lot more hands-on than the previous ones for, just to get stuff done and kinda clean up the town, so. That's why, you know, we're all about saving money and cleaning up the town, so. Just so the public's aware of that too.
Alright, new business. Have to approve our budget that we had our last hearing for there tonight. Budget for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. The resolution dot eighteen, eighteen dot three dot twelve dot one. I have a motion to pass resolution eighteen dot three dot twelve dot one.
Make a motion to pass resolution eighteen dot three dot twelve dot one. Approved the budget eighteen and nineteen.
Motion by Binge?
Seconded.
Seconded by Van Dorn. Roll call vote. Chisholm?
Aye.
Binge?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Van Dorn?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Next up, we have citywide cleanup day. It's usually done in conjunction kinda the week following the citywide run of sale. We have cleanup day, we're scheduling for the fifteenth and sixteenth of June. And we need to just kinda make a decision on where to get our dumpsters from. Waste management has quoted us a price of six hundred ninety-seven ninety-two. Oh, that's right, sorry. Yeah. And I knew that.
I had called the number on the bill to get the estimate and we found out that it was a different estimate for city-based than what's.
Okay, so for the city, delivery of the dumpsters would be eighty-one dollars. To haul off would be a hundred and seventy-five. And disposal would be fifty-seven dollars per ton, which is different than the prices were originally quoted. That's waste management. Commercial sanitation has a forty-dollar delivery fee, a hundred and fifty per load, plus the fifty-seven per ton fee at the landfill. The delivery is a little cheaper dealing with commercial sanitation. That's basically, is that three dumpsters or how many?
Depending on how many you want, it would be that much. Like, if you have two dumpsters, the haul would be a hundred and seventy-five on each one, plus the delivery on each one. And then you can have it empty more than once, so the disposal fee is based on how many times you have it empty and the weight of it.
Do they, are they charging a hundred and seventy-five every time they haul it away?
That was my understanding.
So to bring it in, return it is a hundred and seventy-five?
The eighty-one isn't included in the hundred and seventy-five?
No, that's different.
That's taking it to empty.
Yep.
So we're looking at eighty-one dollars for delivery. Every time they haul, one hundred and seventy-five. Of course, the dump fee's gonna be the same whoever's hauling it out there.
Yep. But again, I think it's something that we definitely, the city's missed it sorely the last few years, last couple of years.
I wasn't able to get ahold of anybody before the meeting tomorrow. I'll try and call Recycles in Atumal and see if we can work with that, if somebody brings tires or things that don't necessarily need to go to the landfill. So I don't have any information here tonight, but I'll try to get some. Normally, we don't bring tires to the citywide dump, do you?
No.
We did, didn't we do it one year way, before we started, I think?
That's before.
That was way back.
They had an arm, all in gun ball, didn't they?
We had tires and.
And there were restrictions. I know the last time we did do it, nothing with cords, like if you had something, like a lamp or something, you had to cut the cord off before you bring it down, before you throw it in.
Freezers, refrigerators, stove.
See, all that could go if you find out something about that. Like I say, if somebody had some tires, I'd be more willing than to haul, you know, if they'll take it without. There's a limit of private.
Five, five per individual.
For trip, I think.
Is it a trip?
I think for trip, per day.
Well, I thought you told me I could take five per day.
Per day, that's what I was saying, I think it was per day.
And I'm thinking that if you showed up ten days in a row, you might.
I have visual of him doing it.
Well, they, they think commercial that way, but if you talk to them, they explain the situation.
Basically, if the city would work something like that out, we would have to find somebody to haul into Atumal then, right?
We'd use a city truck.
I would say it was, I'm more willing to haul that stuff if there's not any kind of a reason that I can't, you know.
But all the lot of that, city truck. They can talk to those ways, Matt, what, it's a city then, they're recycled. They're pretty nice to go over that there.
Does waste management do anything with this? Do they have trailers on there?
Something we can check on.
I think maybe we ought to table it still next month, it's still June.
When's the special meeting? And we said, yeah, no, we have a special meeting coming up. Okay, well, perhaps we might have one coming up.
I was gonna say maybe it's just a few days away or weeks or two, we can just mail it to him.
Yeah, we can add it onto that agenda.
I'm wondering if Waste Management doesn't have, I know some towns, they have trailers that they pick up. Totally, they hauls Recycles.
Recycle, but I don't think that, they might have trailer for tires, but.
Yeah, if they're able to do that, that might be something, that would be a different. I was saying exactly with the recycles in Atumal, that's actually not go through waste management. And maybe that's not doable. I'd say tomorrow, I'll try to find out a little more.
That's what, if we're gonna, if you guys wanna think about it a little longer, that's fine. I have a motion on the table to table deciding where to get our dumpsters from. And that could be, we'll just add that to it then when we approve it on our, get it put on the next, the next meeting agenda.
Mainly that we don't have to handle that stuff in Atumal unless it works out a lot cheaper, but that's the best route for Waste Management. Is they able to do that?
Yeah, they got a way they could come in.
That's not normally, we don't haul out here. But it doesn't, just looking at these figures, doesn't look like commercial sanitation is.
Probably the cheapest.
A little cheaper, you know, if they provide adequate service. Yeah. The only thing, before I picked them, I wanna see if there was, if we could get a little more trash out of them that has its option, that Waste Management's bigger, I think, or we can check with, you know, check with both of them and see if they offer another service for.
For tires or appliances.
Because there's plenty of that around Atumal. We've been without it for two years and.
Commercial sanitation, they're, they're a small family-owned company.
I mean, you see them all over Atumal doing stuff, so.
Waste Management did have on that other list, a list of different sizes and everything. I think they did the forty-foot dumpster, thirty-foot dumpster and twenty-foot, I guess, I don't know.
Maybe we could clarify what size dumpster they're quoting.
They would bring to us, yeah. So that's something.
Yeah.
And normally, can you ask to check like how tall they were? Because I know one year, they were like two stories high and if it wasn't for Sweet Jeff Walker, I would've never gotten anything thrown away.
That's what we had. The last time, we had Dave and Jeff down there where.
Yeah.
You can open the back?
Yeah, can you open it?
You can open the back.
You can open some of the, just for straight in, so. So that's what we'll have to, that's, that's another thing we can look into if we're gonna go ahead and table that for, until the next meeting.
So we got, just drove by, commercial sanitation, just three hours ago, we were there.
Is that something, do we need to do that or, I mean, you want me to check with Waste Management or Commercial Sanitation and you check with the city? Kinda go that route?
If you guys wanna do that, you can. If not, me and Ina can do it.
I was gonna call actual Recycles, yeah, Recycles down there. By the rodeo. Yeah. Yeah. See, see what they have to say, you know, if they would. We could do something along that line. Well, instead of pushing it on Ina, unless, you know, maybe I could.
If you wanna do it now.
I'll get the phone numbers from you or whatever on those and I'll kinda work with Ina on seeing if they, if they have another. Yeah, trailer or another way to get a little more trash out than.
I'm good with that.
I'll work on that. He can work on that and we'll get, when you wanna have that meeting to?
Uh, that's coming up. I think we're gonna discuss that on another agenda item here, so we'll get to that. We can just add that to that agenda, I believe.
Let's just table that and.
Motion from Van Dorn to table.
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Chisholm. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I think we have Patty here from the Historical Preservation Society. She handed this deal for the citywide run of sale. You kinda wanna walk us through this a little bit and show us what we.
Sure. I have to get my copy out here.
So what the Historical Society is offering to do, we do a, one man's trash is another man's treasure rummage sale every year, done it for the last several years, and we have it down in the gym at the school, and when we first started it, we coordinated it, um, or at the lunchroom down at the school, sorry. And when we first started it, we coordinated it with the citywide rummage sale to kinda create a win-win situation for the town and the HPS, 'cause we kinda thought we were working together on it. So because it's fallen by the wayside the last couple of years, and we're still gonna do our rummage sale, we offered to do all of the legwork and the documentation, and, um, all of the stuff involved with doing the citywide rummage sale, and just, um, putting it as part of the one man's trash is another man's treasure. We'll take care of the advertising and the Atomo Courier, we'll put in a two-by-three ad that we usually run for two days, that's gonna cost the HPS eighty dollars, but we'll pay for that. And then there's also something called the Southern Iowa Junk Giant, and we can't be on the map because we have to run all three days if we're actually listed as a point place on the map, but we could take out a sponsor ad that goes around the map, and then advertise both the BHPS rummage sale and the citywide rummage sale on there. BHPS would pay for that as well, that's about seventy-five dollars. And then, again, we would do all of the, the backup work for the participants for the citywide rummage sale, get the maps printed, distribute them all, um, you know, basically do all the legwork behind the scenes, I guess, so... The one thing that we were looking at is how to work together with the city, and we, um, as far as the participants on the map goes, we could charge, or we decided to charge five dollars per participant, if the city goes along with that, with the fifty-dollar minimum, and then if there's, um, you know, more than that, then the city, if the city just pays two-ten, or, you know, whatever, whatever it goes past, I'm getting tripped up in my words here. You guys have all this in front of you, I guess, so, you know, I don't know what else you want me to, to say here, Jason, but...
I'm just, yeah, kinda walking through what the plan was, and...
Yeah.
So, ten people, and then...
Yeah, so a minimum of ten people would give, it'd cost fifty dollars, I guess.
And if we wanted to charge a, a fee?
You guys wanna charge more, you're welcome to charge more.
We could make a little money on the side here for people signing up to get put on the map. Not the, the Historical Preservation Society gets fifty dollars, just be a good thing to, community involvement with the city here. They would be in charge, the Historical Preservation Society, of printing, distributing the maps, uh, and the C-store, I mean, they leave them over there, and people pick them up. Yes, I think it'd be a good deal for us to get on board and kinda help out with this. I said, the rummage sale cleanup day kinda go hand in hand. Would you guys be, would anybody be interested, do you think it'd be a good idea for us to, I mean, charge ten bucks to get put on the map, the city keep five, and the Historical Preservation Society get five, are we behind it? Or just being the contact people for the, for that, do we wanna...
So there's a chance that if enough people don't get on it, that hopefully it's canceled?
Yeah, you, you would have until April twentieth to make that final determination.
So if we, sorry.
Yeah, the one thing that I don't think you wanna do is to advertise the citywide rummage sale and then only have two participants, I think that would almost be worse than doing it at all.
But I don't know, how many people's gonna pay five dollars to get on the map? You sit out in your yard and drive by.
I wouldn't pay ten, I'm sure, I'm just being honest.
I think we, I, you know...
Then we'll send a newspaper, citywide, seven blocks, seven blocks along, like, five blocks, one way. We're gonna drive around town, we're gonna, more people drive around them. Jump David, there's picking up our junk, if we set it up, we got...
So if we go, if we go back to the motivation behind the event, I mean, some of it is to just try to work together cooperatively as a community to, you know, do the citywide rummage sale, I mean, that's how this event started initially, um, and there's always been a charge for getting on the map.
When was that? There wasn't, there wasn't a map the first time we were done.
I remember paying two dollars to City Hall, but beyond their garage, that was like...
Yeah, there was a map, yeah, there was a map.
Not the first year.
Well, I don't know about the, I remember working with Funded Wild.
That was my first year, 'cause my wife and two other ladies set it up, and they drew out their maps, and they just distributed it, and got one dollar from, walked around and got one dollar from each participant.
Was it, was it sponsored through the city at that point in time, Larry?
No.
Okay.
It was just a person, we brought it up to the city and told them we were gonna have, we were gonna get together and have a citywide garage sale, and that was it. Wasn't Blacksburg, it wasn't anything else, it was just people getting together and putting it up, and it was fifty dollars, and she got forty-five dollars paying for that. Somebody gave two dollars, somebody gave nothing, and that was it.
I think, uh, I think it's a great opportunity for the HPS to do, this can be your thing, I mean, the city, we still got water bills we need to get collected. Six months ago, we didn't even know if we was gonna have a city, or a city council, I mean, we got other things to do, it's kinda been tried.
That might be a little...
Well, this has kinda been tried already, and it don't seem like it worked, so I don't feel, I have no desire to do it, you can put us...
I don't think ten dollars would fly anyway, you know.
My, my major problem is, our clerk's busy enough handling this.
Yeah, I don't see, we don't need to try and make any...
Well, I'm not against to go to the, all matter of fact, if we can figure out some way to maybe get some money toward advertising it, or something like that, but, uh, like I said, I think the clerk's got enough to do.
I don't see.
It was just an attempt.
Well, that's fine, but I mean, I don't think...
Yeah, I mean, at one point in time, it was a citywide garage sale, because I remember helping Funded Wild get the maps, and we did it, I think, for two years in a row, and then people started not having their names on the map and just took advantage of the driving around.
People in town are not gonna pay anything, and still get the advantage of the map, 'cause ten, ten minutes, you can drive around the street in this town, so, anybody's got stuff on the yard, it's gonna be, they're gonna stop, so...
And you're not gonna, if you're there, you're sure not gonna walk up and say, oh, you always ten bucks to put your stuff out in the yard.
But yeah, that's just to get on the map, though, so, and that's...
And, uh, if there was a lack of interest, I think you did read on your packet there, that we could have till April twentieth to pull out, if we did wanna participate, but if you guys...
I don't see any...
Well, we, we can go it alone, I mean, we've gone it alone the last couple of years, and it's been a good fundraiser for us, so, I mean, we can go it alone, that's not a problem. I just thought that it would be a nice gesture for the city and BHPS to kinda work together on something like this.
Okay.
So.
It was, uh, yeah, I don't see any...
Can, can the historical thing, can they have upped a stall the citywide garage sale and open it up to the public, and just drive and talk, you know, what I mean?
Apparently, you don't want that.
Apparently, you don't want that, though, so, and that's okay.
No, you guys can open up to the public, though, you...
Oh, yeah, and we will, I mean, we'll advertise it exclusively then, and, and we'll go from there, you know, if the city doesn't wanna participate, that's fine.
Yeah, thanks for asking, but I don't think we'll take the vote on it if we want, but I don't, I particularly, it's not, it don't seem like, uh... It seems like they can put something down the highway in one, and a time when the internet, everybody talks on the internet, there'll be fifty people here driving around that day anyway. I think Eddie Bell's is the week before, or a week after, or something like that.
And, and let me back up to the motivation here, the motivation was to get people working together, yes, and to help out, because we thought that there was some opportunities to capitalize on the advertising, we were willing to pick up all the expense for the advertising, you know, that's a hundred and fifty dollars of free charges to the city, if you wanted to advertise it as a citywide rummage sale. If the city chooses not to do that, that's, I mean, that's fine, we'll, we'll go it alone, that's, you know, it's okay.
I'm moving to make the motion to let, let them do it, and we don't have to do a bit of things loaded on, I guess, but then... I'm hoping to make the motion that the city just lets BHPS do it, and we'll stay on our agenda, moving ahead to what we're trying to do.
Okay, I'll give you a second. Motion by Van Dorn, second investment to allow the HPS to go out alone on a citywide garage.
I don't think the HPS was asking for permission.
That's not what I mean by that, I don't know, but whatever.
Right, I mean...
We're trying to do this by the book, it's good.
So I guess it would be to not participate.
To not participate. Jerry makes a motion to not participate in the citywide...
Well, we don't have to vote on it if it's not, if this wasn't brought up to, you know, it doesn't matter to me.
Just gives us a record of it, I think.
Yeah, probably should.
But it's on, it's on the agenda.
It should show who, who was for and who was against that.
All right, motion by Van Dorn to not participate in citywide rummage sale on June ninth, seconded by Smith, in favor? All right. Make a resolu-, uh, resolution eighteen dash three dash twelve dash three, approve, uh, pay increase for Gary Pollitt to eleven dollars per hour, we have a...
Before we hold on it.
Absolutely, okay.
Ready?
Let's go.
I think Gary's been doing a great job, and time to come and work with him, I told him so. Uh, what's concerning me, though, is we've got an awful lot of stuff going on here, that doesn't sound like much, we talked about twenty hours when we were working on our budget, kind of a ballpark. Town, I'm guessing, we probably were gonna have weeks, we had more than twenty hours, and that's only a thousand or so, and, but we've got this deal hanging out here with Dirt Works, the fire department, and maybe after the meeting, we can talk about where we're really at on the fire department. We've got the deal with the audit, and if you look in your packet here tonight, you look on the financials, you'll see that employee benefits is about four thousand some negative, I realize we got another quarter to go, and that isn't all of it. But I guess what I'm trying to bring out here, and we've got our proprietary fund here, and this is in the budget stuff, you guys probably don't have it, but we can make a copy if anybody wants it. The in our proprietary funds, what we budgeted for fiscal twenty nineteen, uh, we're showing twenty-five thousand dollars going in the hole, and I realize we're gonna have to raise some rates, but if I remember right, uh, half of his pay is based off of sewer and... And I guess why I'm concerned, uh, and I, I'd like for these other councilmen to go with me, so we don't have a group, and we'll get Gary, put down the pump house, and Jason and I are gonna try to do this, we haven't got, down to the pit, down the lagoon, there's stuff, long-term stuff, we need to fix. There, unless it's changed, we had a fire here, was it last year, had no water, and we went down there, and, excuse me, all of us involved knew nothing about the system, Rathman came over and helped us, there's jumper wires, with alligator clips, piles with the fronts off of them, and this is what is keeping our water system going. And fellas, I thank the world of Gary, I think he's doing a great job, I think we need to take this year and do everything we can to pinch pennies, and try to get where we're getting dug out of the hole, and this is just one thing, I'm a fiscal hawk, I can't help it. And we need to have surpluses in these funds, so if something happens, you know, if light breaks, so we've got some money to deal with it, it's not a crisis. And like I say, I think the world of Gary, he's doing a way of a job, but I, I think this year, we need to look at everything, is this something we have to do, or is it something we wanna do? Because we're gonna ask the taxpayers to pony up quite a little debt here this year, and that's my say on it.
But it should've been done four years ago, so it wouldn't have been such a hard hit to them this year.
And that, I won't argue that, but others, we've gotta, we've gotta dig in here.
We're the bad ones, 'cause we gotta kick it up.
Just to me in here, listen, you talk, digging in on the guy that's gonna fix most of those problems.
Well, he's not, we're gonna have to hire electricians.
I understand all that a bit, but...
And I'm not digging in on him, I'm just...
No, I understand where you're coming from.
And that's what I'm talking about, waste.
I've been, and I know, I've been busting my little fanny for the last three months to get money in that water sewer fund, and it's working, but I, I'll be right up front, when it comes up, I'm gonna vote to give him the dollar.
Well, that's, that's, everybody's got their preference, okay.
Do you have anything to say, Larry? I, I think, I think we all have our say, I mean, but, uh, uh, he's doing beyond and above, I mean, he's not... I've been with him when he's not charging for hours that he's working, I mean, he takes off when he, uh, if he absolutely doesn't have to work, seems like a very honest guy. And, uh, we need to keep, we need to keep the people working for the city that we have right now, the last five years, we haven't had, you know, not much getting fixed, not much going on. This whole, um, this whole volunteer stuff that I'm trying to start up, where we're actually involved more, is to work with him. I would like to go through somehow and see, I know you can't have a quorum, but a time and a place, just like us going down there to look at all this stuff, all that stuff needs looked at, it's, it seems to me that it's, I don't know if there's any way you can go, uh, vote on that, and, and go to these things without, with a quorum, I mean, to work on stuff and to figure out what you need. Or you just need to do it over and over with two people.
Go two at a time.
Two at a time, yeah.
Three at a schedule, to me, for what we're trying to do.
And coming to mind when we look, how about Larry going down in there, or Lathier? Some of those guys, they, he's looked at enough of that stuff, he could surely get some...
I can sure tell you what, I was, oh, basically, I've been down there with Joe Kirkman several times, and I'm, if you wanna have him come down, that's fine, I'm not against that, but it'll be pretty obvious what...
Well, I'll see, we need to have these three people come down, and it's kinda silly to try to have three different people come down, and each one of us, or two of us at a time, meet with them, I don't...
That's the way, like we did, uh, when we did the, uh...
I mean, we're trying to help and fix the city, it just seems like to me that...
When we did the training session, that was worded as no city business, city business would be discussed, nothing would be voted on, correct? Isn't that how that was worded on those? It was open to the public, why don't, why don't we try to do that, the public can go down with us, or walk down?
Come down with the camera.
Yeah, 'cause it's ridiculous to try to do this, Eric, you can't have somebody come out and do whatever.
Contact the league, we'll contact the league, find out what the legalities are, see if we can do that, does it agree?
I can tell you the stuff that Joe Kirkman told me, uh, Joe comes down a lot, you go down with him, and he's been at this a long, long time.
Yeah, yeah.
But if, if we don't dig our heels in, uh, and look at the best way to do things, we're not gonna get dug out of this all.
If we didn't dig our heels in, remember, we wouldn't even be talking about this. I, I often think, and I'm, you know, try to word this carefully, if water bills have been properly collected for the last five years, we might not be sitting there talking about raising water rates. And I don't think it's an exaggeration, I said the other day, what can I...
And I don't think it's an exaggeration, I said the other day, and what kind, I think I was pretty close, I was told, we brought more money in to that fund in the last three months and probably was stuck in there the last three years.
And I commend you for doing that.
No, the point I'm trying to make is that it's, it's just the problem we got and we're gonna have to take care of it.
It's a one-time shot, once you get it in, then, you know, we're still gonna have to cut up nothing and pay these bonds off.
I know, I mean... We're cautiously optimistic on paying the bonds off and after those bonds are paid off and it's gonna have to be discussed and maybe signed in blood, that 110% will be taken out of that fund and laid back to make those payments with. And I think I said that every time I've been up here at this table, that should have been done the day those were signed.
Plus we need to have a reserve in there, like I say, if we have a sewer line break or we've gotta get a cushion established here in town in these funds so that...
Because...
Something bad happens, we're not scratching and digging trying to...
A lot of people in town don't understand and, and again, I wish more come to the council meetings, all welcome to challenge me, but the whole problem is, we came in with zip in that fund and a payment due in June. And I wish more people understood that because when you explain it to them, it comes into their head pretty quick. There was nothing there.
Jason, I, uh, make a motion that we approve Resolution 18.3.12.3.
Motion by Van Dorn to approve Resolution dot 18.3 dot 12 dot 3. Seconded by Smith. Uh, in favor, uh, roll call, excuse me, Mr. Resolution Roll Call, Chisman?
Nay.
Nay. Uh, Binge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Van Dorn?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Okay, um, now, two thoughts, uh, what he was referring to there about needing to put money back in some of these proprietary funds and funds, something that we've discussed, uh, this will be our first reading of a resolution to adopt an increase in the utility ordinance, Title 5, Title 6, Chapter 5, utilities to monthly garbage rates going from $13 per month to $15 per month. As I mentioned in the past, that which, now that we're kinda operating the water and sewer and water bills the way that they should be, that this shouldn't be an issue, but if people, you know, ten people decided not to pay that part of their, their bill, then uh, when, we weren't making, we didn't have enough money to pay for the trash. We were going into the hole on that. So this is something that needs to be done. Uh, yes, as you see in your agenda there, we set the date for the, a special meeting for the second reading and then our regularly scheduled meeting in April will be the public hearing and then also have the, we'll vote to approve it then as well. That's a $2 per month increase. At 140 properties in town, I guess it's 140 that...
Approximately.
Excuse me.
How many houses are favorable?
Right, but, yes.
Jason, do you have a copy of the ordinance with the changes that you've made?
I have one up here, what was there. What we were looking at here is they didn't really have a rate in here, so we weren't sure if they were just giving a open for us to fill in the, so I did not write up or deny that actual ordinance. It just has a dollar sign and no amount.
Which was the problem we had when that ordinance book was recodified, there was a lot of things that were just left.
So, so basically, so I haven't, is the resolution written up then or...
Um, we are, we do have a resolution here denied for them to look at.
Okay, so what does the resolution say then? Does it just basically say that the ordinance, or how is the ordinance being modified?
I'm sorry, we do not have the resolution written up.
Okay.
So we'll have to actually have a special, two different special meetings.
I guess this was our, are you going to do this meeting, really? And I should have written the resolution.
So that means we'll probably have to set two special...
Two more meetings.
No problem. Can, can we waive those?
We can waive.
Yeah, you can waive them.
For something like that, is that what...
So we can set our meeting and read the resolution at the meeting, a special meeting, and then waive the others.
Waive it.
But if you waive the others, then you don't have a public hearing at all for the public to, to do any input?
We waive one and then just waive having three.
Waive, waive a second hearing.
Is that what you're saying, are waiving?
Yeah, you get, yeah, so your ordinance has to be read three, three times, I think, right, to change an ordinance?
Yeah, I thought you could waive the last one, but if we need to read a three, that's no problem.
No, no, and I'm, it just takes longer to get it through. My point was, if you want the public to have input, you don't wanna have a meeting and then waive the last two and not get the public...
So when we read the resolution, then we would schedule the hearing there.
Or just schedule, well, yeah.
Have it available and it'll be posted on there too and in the paper in about our minutes we'd have...
Do you have time to get your public hearing in at your next special meeting? Is it a 10-20 deadline?
We...
Because then you could waive the last two.
I think we can waive the last two, I think we're okay, I'll look at the dates and everything to just verify that.
Yeah.
So any, any discussion here on this, is everybody, I mean, we're still pretty much, that's something that's been discussed and...
I'm not sure it's enough, but, you know. Well, I don't know, I...
It's gonna bring in, uh, the 140 homes, $2 is an extra, that's $280 a month, so we're looking at basically about $4,000 per year, 12 times 300, uh, excuse me, 3,500 a year, sorry.
How many households?
140.
How far in the hole are we?
Trash, garbage.
Started, uh, because I never thought about it until it was mentioned to me by a very smart lady that when water bills aren't paid, garbage is collected, we were getting took good.
And that's what, now that the water bills and the water payments are coming in, they're gonna, coming up, yeah.
So there's money we lost, it's not, it's a good way to say it, we gotta make it back up.
Increase and we are, and while we're discussing, uh, more new business here, uh, because we didn't have a resolution written up, can't really pass that, so we'll be moving on. Uh, but before we adjourn, uh, Willene, on, under new business, Willene was in, uh, from the insurance company, uh, just kinda touching base with this and talking, uh, she said they offer a, which we can get put on the next, uh, agenda, they offer a rate to ensure our fire hydrants, that we currently don't have, uh, $7 per fire hydrant. Uh, so the premium would be about $140, just something if we ever have problems with them in the world, that it's insured.
That wasn't for maintenance, it was for, like, if there's damage, like if somebody runs over.
No, it's just for damage, not for maintenance.
Also with that, the DNR did come to talk to Joe Kirkland, uh, they both, uh, wrote a letter to us, uh, and we just got this in the last week, uh, after the packets have been sent out, uh, we have to get some meters calibrated, um, really there's five things under requirements that we need to, to get caught up and then, uh, one recommendation, provide easy access to the outfall structures, the recommendation, uh, the requirements, calibrate the flow meter, calibrate the pH meter, uh, sign a date, all discharge monitoring reports, uh, comply with, uh, fluent limitations of the NPDS permit at all times. So, uh, this was just kind of an audit and I think that they wanna make sure that, uh, we just get everything up and that, in the letter that state that, uh, we had to read this to you guys because it was, we believe you will find the report, uh, although the one. The cooperation assistance provided by Joe Kirkland was appreciated. The city has made great strides with its II and these efforts should be continued, uh, so it wasn't like all bad, uh, just, that was the part I was trying to find in there, that there was some positive in there, that we're, we've come a long way, uh, with our wastewater and treatment facility down there.
Hopefully the lining does not save us, keep us from having to deal again.
Because that was part of the, the phase two part of that project was the lining, so, but that's what we got, guys. Um, so I guess...
While we're, excuse me, while we're talking about building fence, is that property, do we have liability insurance on that property on High Street? That is something we need to check with.
Well, they're not, my guess is probably.
I'm guessing.
And I'm guessing, uh, liability, but maybe not on structure, but you wanna look at it.
Backtrack in just a minute, guys, uh, we need to set a date for our special meeting for the, the reading of the resolution to adopt that.
When will be our actual first?
That will be our first reading of the resolution to raise the garbage rates. Uh, does anybody have any recommendations of dates, next Monday? Does that work, Monday evening?
Maybe it works for me.
Do we wanna do it sooner than that?
Sooner's fine too.
Okay. I don't really hear anything. Do you have to do a special meeting?
Uh, if we, to get it done quicker, we would have to, I mean, we could wait.
The only thing I'm going on by this financials, right now, looks like we're in the black. So, you know, a couple of weeks gonna kill us.
What's this for, the garbage?
Yeah, right now.
If you guys wanna wait till the next regularly scheduled meeting and have a special session?
See, we're, we're, we're in the black on garbage right now.
Right now.
And I'm back to saving money again. I mean, it's life or death, we have it.
It just depends on when we wanna put it in place and wait for the start date.
I guess like, kinda want sooner than later. If you're wanting to not give a raise, then you don't wanna care about this, that's not...
You're, you're mixing things up, talking about saving money. Saving money in there and you've already got money coming here. If we were, if we were, if we were negative, then I would say do it now. Plus, if, if everybody, if everybody donates their salary, these special meetings don't matter, we could have one every week. I'm gonna donate my salary.
You don't get paid for special meetings.
Yeah, we do.
You do.
That's why, that's why I'm...
I know, y'all do, I know.
They're never say, huh?
That's what I'm talking about.
I'm kinda like you, I just, let's just get it done. Supposed to be kicked down the road too much last four or five years, let's just sit down and get it done and go do some...
I had no idea we got paid. I'm gonna make it for the record, I'm donating mine to the cemetery, so I feel bad that we was gonna give them rock and we didn't, so that's to the cemetery board and I need to meet those people, but that's how it's...
We'll give them off later in the spring or the day after the festival.
If everybody would do that, we could have many meetings we wanted, not to care about it.
I didn't even know we got paid for them.
Your timeline on here, Jason, was to approve it at the regular city council meeting in April. If you just schedule your public hearing, just like you did today, right before that, have your public hearing, vote the first time through, suspend the second and third reading, you can still have it passed and then you've got no special meetings and you saved that money.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, the sort of, because you have a, just like here. Can we do that?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Then you save your two special meetings.
Our two special meetings.
All right, I'm serious, folks, we're, we've got a budget, first time in years, you know, we've done that, but if we don't knuckle down and keep things in line, we're gonna stick, you know, the budget's guideline, what we've gotta do now is do the painful things that aren't fun to make it work.
Oh, we're, we're doing it, we're doing it. Water bills, yeah, I'm doing it.
If there's any, if there's any, if there's any changes on this budget, it will be amended.
Okay, is, is the water bills, I hope, can we do this? This is new business.
New business?
Just a question.
Okay.
Okay, get your water bill, you're not paid, you get 30 days more, the second month, or you wait till...
The ordinance reads...
I believe, yes, the, it's...
They're notified on the second month and then you said you're on the shut-off list.
Yeah, 384...
Six per two months.
Yeah, and the only, since we're talking and cameras are, the only thing we're obligated to do and we're probably gonna do a little more occasionally, there are 384, 84, we're only obligated to send that notice out by ordinary mail.
Yeah.
We don't need to take flowers to the house, we don't need to plead and beg and cawl or anything else, we send it ordinary mail.
And that's what, the deal with the payment plans, we send them certified mail because we wanted them to make sure that they would sign for them, we got them, uh, now that all that money started to come in, now we're back on schedule with...
It was such a large amount, we wanted to make sure somebody couldn't say, I didn't get it.
Right, and now that, now we don't have large amounts anymore, the people that had large amounts that signed up for...
Worst case scenario I can see now is, we'll be on top of it for a couple hundred dollars a year.
Okay, one more still in business before we go on with this. Um, I don't quite understand, and I don't want us to all get track, get on track on this, so we don't have a hold on someone, uh, how do we go about, why do we finance a homeowner fixing from the stop box on?
We own to the...
City owns to the stop box, right?
Correct.
Is that our property?
Yep, yes.
So if it goes bad, we fix it.
Right.
Okay, from there on, if that has to be fixed, why does the city finance that for individuals?
They're not supposed to. We, we need to get them...
We, we've done that in the past.
Yeah, I'm thinking about wondering now.
Was it on a six-month term? Was it on a six-month term? I can't remember, I thought when that was passed and was set up, there were six months to pay.
Uh, we had a, we had a neighbor, um, down there and he had to set up payments on his. It was very expensive and it was a hardship and that's been, I'm gonna say, I better be careful, I'm gonna say eight or nine years ago, so...
I would say that that's something that needs to be addressed, Alan.
Throwing a thousand dollars at somebody.
Since we're addressing this problem...
Well, I don't like financing, that's what I'm saying, why does the city finance?
But if they're paying it all, you know, if they're not paying it, that's something different.
And if they, something like that, okay, we can lean the property and get it, I mean...
Yeah, we can, but...
It was a $1,200 deal and the neighbor just, I mean, he's an honest person, he just didn't have it.
Well, I'm thinking about a $1,500 one right now.
But they set up, they set up a payment plan and he was made payment, I know that for a fact, and that's a long time ago that happened.
If it could be...
I was still working when that happened.
We'll talk to, uh, the land insurance, on my, oh, land insurance, it was a dollar on my insurance and it comes from that stop box to my house.
So we just needed to get a signed contract, yes, we're going to, we need to get signed on that.
Sign a contract, going in before those, before that work is done, we need to do it before that work's done.
Well, since Larry's talking insurance, would anybody be open to, you know, a lot of cities are doing it and they think we'll bill it, so would anybody open and it's anybody's option? If the city could offer insurance to cover that work and just add to the water bill, say a couple bucks a month, I don't want the premium to be on it. A lot of cities are doing that. A lot of cities go from the main to the house and that's why they do that. So whether anybody in town would be interested in that, I don't know. Now, what Larry mentioned, that's kinda new to me, I'd like to, you know, I've been out of it five years, I don't know if they're offering that or not.
We just gotta move homeowner insurance because it raises, which switched homeowners and that's in our plan, it raises a dollar for that protection.
I had my water lines insured in the yard and in the house.
Okay, months?
I also had the sewer line.
Yeah.
From this street all the way through insured, where my insurance company, and I don't think it's more than $15 a year.
It's a matter of dollars for mine. Anyone new business?